Give me a roll call please.
For the record, all council members are present today.
Thank you. Saabdi, do we have public comments? Do we have anybody that'd like to speak on any item? Anybody in the queue?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll pass over on public comments. We'll move on to item number three now, which is adjourned to close session to consider. City Attorney, would you like to read the two in the record?
If I can jump in, Mayor.
Sure.
Mayor Potem Elaine Holmes here. 3.1, I have to recuse myself from because I have a financial interest owning property in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Remins, Board of Counsel. 3.1, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The property is 45238 Oasis Street. Negotiating parties are Brian Montgomery, the City Manager, and I O R A Hospitality LLC. Under negotiation are pricing terms. Item number 3.2 is conference with legal counsel, potential litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 D, one matter.
With that, we'll adjourn to close session. We'll be back at 5 o'clock. Off we go.
Good evening, we're gonna call the City Council meeting to order here for the City of Indio on June 18th at 5 o'clock. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Wietron.
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Furman.
Present.
Mayor Protem Holmes.
Present.
And Mayor Miller.
Present. At this time, if you could please rise, we have invocation by Pastor Tony Williams of Love of Christ Community Church, and we have a very special person doing our flag salute.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we just come before you, Lord, acknowledging your wisdom, your greatness, your majesty, understanding that you've given stewardship to us, not ownership, so let us be wise stewards, in that we seek your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding. And Father, in your word, you said, "When we have looked after the least of us, we've done it unto you." So, Lord, as we're governing, as we're looking to do business, let us not forget the business of the people that are less fortunate, the ones who are down and out, who may be maligned or overlooked. And, Lord, no matter what happens, let this city be a beacon on their heel. Let this city be a light that shines bright. Let the persons that you have in these positions govern with wisdom, govern with heart, govern with compassion and mercy. So, Lord, we just thank you for it all, and we turn this meeting over to you. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Williams.
You're welcome.
Now, we got the Pledge of Allegiance by Bella Padron from Johnson Elementary. Meet Bella, a bright and bubbly third grader at Lincoln B. Johnson Elementary. She's always on the go, whether she's scoring goals on the soccer field or showing off her spirit and cheer. Math is her superpower, and she's the kind of student who are always ready to lend a hand keeping things tidy and taking the lead, and taking the lead. Bella loves learning new things and staying busy. No boring days for her. One day, she dreams of becoming a heart surgeon.
Oh.
And helping people in a big way. Bella, please, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every ten just as for all.
Amen. Thank you. I got a little swag bag down here from you, from the city, make all your fellow students jealous. Thank you. Come on, go in the middle here. And here's our report. There you go. This is yours? That's part of the meeting. With that, we'll move on to item number four, which is the City Attorney Report on Closed Sessions. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Member of Council. On item 3.1, we have no reportable action, and I'm told that on item 3.2, we also have no reportable action.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item number five, which is the City Manager Report. Information, Mr. Montgomery, I see you have one item, 5.1. Do you have anything else that you'd like to share?
Just one other matter you and I discussed. The, there are other entities, cities in the valleys, including SEVAG, they're looking at a coalition to address clean air, airborne dust, and so forth. There's a process, a coalition, a resolution. If one of you would be interested in having us present that, or if the majority of you would like to, we could bring that forward. I'm not sure if there's a financial obligation, but we thought you and I discussed, if there is interest, we could bring it back for discussion.
This is Topper from Indian Wells, Greg Sanders, Manuel Perez, and a bunch of other elected officials and groups that are getting together to try and see how we can mitigate some of this dust issue that started with Hurricane Hillary or Tropical Storm Hillary, and then is now is continued with the heavy winds and that. You know, we always have those two preserves. It's one of the reasons Indian Canyon gets overrun all the time, is they have the preserve there. But we also have the one on our side, which is on the other side of Sunset Palm Desert, which goes over the edge there. But I know, you know, that some of these people have their own ideas and thoughts, and what's the council's pleasure? I mean, we're all about clean air, but is this something we want to get involved in? Anyone? Mr. Furman?
Of which, I mean, I don't have a problem looking at it, but is this something that we're gonna have to assign someone to? Is this something we're gonna have to pay into? Is this, is there something that we're gonna be able to read and look at first before we even dive into this?
Perhaps that's a great idea, is we could email, email out the information that we have. I think some of those questions aren't known yet. My guess is there may, over time, be a financial participation for some sort of study or lobby in effort, but...
What I understand right now, they want a letter of support to see if there's even enough interest in the valley to look at it. I know dust mitigation's a big deal. I mean, unless we're gonna get some support from, and I know they're talking about another EPA report. I think the federal government, not the state, but the federal government did an EPA report about 10 years ago, but you can't use that because it's past the date that they recognize it. So, they would have to come back and get the EPA of the federal government to come back and mitigate the dust monitors throughout here to make sure that they meet the goals. But that's something we could do. Mr. Gutron?
I was just thinking the same thing. We need some sort of a summary and a fact-finding to see what our commitments and what other things are expectations.
So, okay. And so, what I think, Mr. Montgomery, I think the easiest way to do is to reach back out. You have the email. Reach back out to them, show us our concern. Is there a financial commitment to it? Yes, we're all about clean air and that. How does the city participate? Who are the participants now to make sure the group that's there is people we want to, you know, align ourselves with? Because everybody has a good idea in cost, but is it, is it for the greater Coachella Valley? How does it impact Indio? And then also, what they're looking for us for is a letter to, what's the ultimate outcome of it?
Great. Sounds like a good resolution. Then, this item, you referred to, it was a request at the last council meeting that we have this discussion, much like that very last item, not necessarily for action, but we'd certainly like some guidance. If there's some further research you'd like us to do. There is some timeliness, timeliness with regard to the 9/11 memorial in that the artist that has been selected by the city has indicated that if we notify him within a couple of weeks, he could have it ready, and if there's a site ready, in time for this 9/11.
Okay.
So, there's some timeliness there. But this is the design that was selected by the City Council a little over a year ago. Part of the, the timing issue in the... ago. Part of the, the timing issue and the delay has been that the public safety campus Phase One was under construction, and so there was some delay there. And then the discussion had here as to whether, now with the headquarters building being a little closer to the corner, if this still makes sense. But this gives you a reminder of what it looks like during the day. This is a night view. You see the lights. My recollection are the perforations there in the metal would represent every person that lost their life that, that tragic day. So, this is where it was going to go, on the corner of Dr. Carrion and Jackson. Technically, there's still space there to do this, but as was discussed, whether that is the best and if all other alternatives could be reviewed. And that's just this quick discussion right now. So, you see, the red dot is where it had been planned. And speaking with some staff, knowing that the nine eleven memorial has some focus and significance, particularly to public safety, law and fire, these three sites are others that are on the public safety campus that could be considered. So, one is in front of the fire station, one is in front of the existing, near the existing admin building, and then around on Bristol, there's a detention basin that a corner would be available for that site. So, I'll review a few, and then I'm sure, Mayor, you'll want to discuss some of these, and we can click back. But certainly, the campus is still a possibility. One staff member showed us this. This is in Eastville, where, you know, part of the street was closed off and a gathering was had on a location similar to what was proposed originally on Dr. Carrion and Jackson. Just gives you some idea of how, how it could be, could be done even alongside a street. Another option, of course, is Miles Avenue Park, where we have a lot of space and a lot of options. I refer to the yellow dots as the Veterans' Memorial, excuse me, is that nine eleven memorial. The, the orange kind of half moon shape is a potential discussion on the Veterans' Memorial. These are two separate ideas. But right there in the center of that yellow, the yellow circle in the center is an existing rotunda-type location within Miles Avenue Park. We have turf areas there. But essentially, Miles Avenue Park, it could go almost anywhere, except that we wouldn't want to interfere with the ball fields. This is the Fargo area. The former Doug York area still has some space, perhaps not enough for the Veterans' Memorial, but could fit the nine eleven memorial. The area where the cacti are also, near the preschool on, on property owned by the city is, is a consideration. There are areas, the new parking that's near the Jackson Overpass has been recently, you know, painted with the murals and then landscaped and the parking lot established. At one time, this was going to be a, a park named after Mr. Tineman. So, there's an idea. This is George Patton Park. In the north end of town, there is another rotunda. I believe it's a Palo Verde tree there in that semicircle. Perhaps the nine eleven could go there. Certainly, there's parking. It's a great location for a lot of activities, a lot of eyes on, on the area. And, of course, named after General Patton, certainly a discussion. North Jackson has several areas. I identified the armory there, also for the Veterans' Memorial. If you see those half moon shapes, the armory, you know, has to come down, but there'll be property around it. Even alongside the, the, let's call it the eastern edge of the ballpark, there's space there. You see one of those yellow dots there. It's fenced, but could be opened up. A lot of parking near a recreational area, certainly a military installation. We speak to the armory, the National Guard Armory there historically, that will eventually have to come down. The sports complex, I visited the site yesterday. Please do drive by and take a peek in. It is, it's fabulous. Coming along well. You heard we have a delay on the switchgear needed for the lights, but other than that, it's moving well. There are a number of locations. I know this is a little bit faint, but one of them, more in the middle of the site, I put a yellow circle. That is specifically designated for some sort of art. So, whether it's this nine eleven memorial, Veterans' Memorial, or something else. And then there are a couple I put on the, let's call it the western edge. There are sites over there that could also be utilized, but plenty of property out at the sports complex for these type of facilities. This will be a very, very active space. Families, visitors from other parts of the valley to be here with us. Councilman Gutron had indicated that we should also consider this property that's across from the museum. There's parking, but that turf area, which is also another item on the agenda later on, I put a couple of, a few circles there where somewhere on that lot, perhaps it could be included, and still enough land to be used for some other purpose. So, just wrapping up, those are a handful of ideas. Here, you, you saw what you had already approved for the nine eleven memorial. Here's some concepts from other cities related to a Veterans' Memorial. Can be very simple, but very meaningful. As you see all of these samples, and would not take up much property. So, Mayor, your, your lead on going through where, how you'd like to discuss what would make sense, what you'd like us to further research, or just provide some direction that we could bring back and you can confirm a site?
Well, I'll just kind of go back. You know, the nine eleven piece is supposed to go in front of the, the safe, public safety campus, the second area there. But there's just not any parking there. There's really not an area. And the walking area is on the bottom left-hand side, where you're gonna walk into the lobby there. So, really, people that want to sit there and reflect or be there, it's very difficult for them to be able to get there. And it's not the safest place, you know, on that, on that corner. So, we didn't think about that. I, I think the other areas on, on the public safety campus, you know, blocking off roads and that, we have enough problems with traffic to block off roads and that. They're doing that once in a time. This is actually something, I think, with not just the nine eleven piece, but the Veterans' Memorial, you know, with the flags and all the, the branches of service, including the National Guard, because a lot of our members were National Guard members, and actually were at the armory, didn't actually serve in the, in the US Army because they weren't ever called up, but did their duty like they were supposed to, and, and every month and, and go to, to serve. So, we want to honor them too. I just don't know if those are big enough locations where it'd make a difference. So, it's gotta either be somewhere on Miles. Patton Park's good, but there's not a lot of parking. And it's really a, a park that's more for, you know, events and people there. And you put that event there, yeah, you could do it, but there's not a lot of parking there that you can go to either. So, and it's a very, one of our better parks. And so, I, I say Miles Park, the sports park, or somewhere on Miles Avenue that I think would be something that people can reflect on and utilize. But we'll go down the road and decide here. But I think we should combine the two of them. I don't think there should be two separate. I don't think you want to, if you see the nine eleven stands, so we'll have our public safety apparatus there, police, fire, whatever, other ones that we want to do, sheriff, whatever. And then our military one, we could have a flag there, and it could be behind, actually behind that wall, overlooking the whole thing. We could have that there too, and then all our branches around the edge. Something that's meaningful, easy to get to, but also could be utilized, instead of having one over here and one over here. But that's, Wayman will go this way.
Yeah, I, I favor the Miles Park or the sports park, but more, most of the Miles parks, I think, that gives a lot, gives us the opportunity to do something on a greater scale in respects to honoring the folks who, who passed, not just the, the public safety. But there were a lot of folks there. There were professionals there. There were schools there, people around there. So, I think it means a lot to everyone. Plus, with the, the museum, what we have going on downtown, it gives people opportunity to say, hey, you know what? I'm gonna go eat downtown, and let's walk over to the memorial, see the memorial. We could go over to the museum. So, it's giving people more of a reason to make it a destination downtown. And, and in respects to the public safety campus, I think this also gives us the opportunity to do something else there, specifically for public safety, right? Whether it's a memorial of, you know, maybe our first chief, I, I don't know, or a fire. But I, I like the idea of, let's start working on Miles Park. It's, you know, it's our biggest park, and I think it's kind of taking a backseat from a lot of the other things. I do like the, the grass area across the street. Nonetheless, I think in the future, that might be used for a development. So, we don't want to have to try to work around it, or, or we gotta move this. So, I think the Miles Park, I, I think if we start to focus on this side of the Miles Park, and then across the street, you know, we have the fields and things like that.
So, you refer to the east side of the park?
Yeah, I prefer the east side of the park. And then, the same thing with the sports complex. I think it gives us opportunity. I like those locations, but for something more tend towards sports, right? So, that's, that's my opinion. So, I'm, Miles Park for me.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
I'm gonna reiterate, essentially, those were my two picks, Miles Avenue Park, or Miles Park, I should say, or the sports center. I think we need to, to do more there and bring more to Miles Park. We've been wanting to. It's a beautiful park. It has a wonderful and rich history. It's near the museum. So, to have those two there, those two, they're not statues, but memorials, and to have events around them and to plan events around them, I think, would draw even more people to, for me, it's Miles Park, and better utilizing that park. And people that are already there, the museum gives tours for the kids. They give a lot of school tours. How great would it be then to have the kids in that tour visit these memorials and all that history that goes along with it? So, that would be my first choice, is, is Miles Park. I think that just makes sense, for all, to aggregate all of the memorials.
Mr. Gutron?
I'm gonna concur that Miles Park would be the place. I like the location where it's more visible from the street, so as people drive by, they can take pride and see what this community supports and respects what happened in nine eleven, but then supports our veterans, because we do have a lot of veterans in the city. And I think if something's designed along the Miles Avenue route, as people drive by it, they can pay homage where it's well lit, visible at night, rather than sit back in the older part of the park, the original side of Miles Park. We have a lot of older trees, eucalyptus trees that people appreciate, and would not like to blind that out, because that's also natural sage. But ever since all those buildings that existed on the expansion of it, everything came down, and it's been one-way open space. But if we do something towards the Miles Avenue, as people drive by, it goes along the line that's been done, a lot of work along Miles from Monroe. So, it should give a really nice view coming into the city, directly into downtown. So, if we do something nice that kind of blends in representing the veterans, public safety and the nine eleven would be really nice. So, I concur with Councilman Wayman and Mayor Protem.
So, you're talking, but he's talking the east side. You're talking the west?
I'm talking the west side.
And I should, if it helps the discussion. It, it's dirt now, it's ziriscaped. There's a little bit of retention there, but the, being on Miles more, if you still want it on the east side as a consensus, there's space right on Miles to make it happen as well. We could dress that up. It could be on the opposite corner. Let's call it the, the northeast corner rather than the northwest corner, if desired. Again, it's ziriscaped. We could turf it and make it look really nice there as well. It may even be less expensive not having to move irrigation and things to put it there.
Well, the, the other thing, it's, it would be designed in a way where it's, doesn't get tampered with, well-designed, open and visible constantly by the passing traffic and pedestrian traffic, because a lot of people have been using Miles for walks, bicycle traffic and so forth, which is what everybody wanted. So, it would be under the constant view. Then at night, everybody would see it. So, I would, I would deter from going any further in the park, but on the perimeter of the park. Kind of like what Indian Wells did. If you look at Indian Wells, their memorial is City Hall right off of 111. When you drive by, you see it.
Who are your friend seats at the?
Yeah, so there's a dirt area.
Down below here.
Yeah, and I, I'm trying to point.
East corner?
Filling that in.
Okay, yeah.
Where the scout house used to be?
Yeah, the scout facility used to be on that corner.
That's what I was looking at.
Again, it looks a little rougher now, but, you know, we're gonna be doing a lot of flat work as part of this anyway, pavers or whatever. Certainly, that could be dressed up and look a lot nicer.
Is there enough room there?
I think so. Oh, yes.
To make it viable in between? I hate to say it shoved in between a parking lot and a, and that.
You know, in fact, that's, you know, this is a discussion item. We could bring back, if Miles Park is the consensus, we could bring back a couple of ways to situate that. And then you could say, we like that one, not that one, and we'll, we'll scale it out. But it certainly appears that the, that dirt area would more than accommodate both of them, depending on how you'd like to, to lay those out. So...
Especially some of the concepts, some of the concepts that you gave for the veterans side of it, because it would be seven branches. It's the six military and the National Guard, like, like the mayor mentioned. It should be fine.
Yeah, they don't take up tons of space if you pick one of these.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with Miles Park. I think there's plenty of space there. It's right next to the History Museum, which ties in well with the piece, close by to the American Legion, and plenty of parking per events. So, I think that works.
Yeah, I think, I, I like the idea. The only, I, I concur with you, Mr. Gutron, on having, I, I'm a little weary about having it that close to the street, you know, because of traffic, if somebody was to lose control and actually do it. But also, I'm hoping that as we open up our new sports park, that we start to put money into Davis Field and Miles Park, take that walking path back out, and actually start putting lights back in and square the soccer fields up with small ones up towards the top where the, the old Burger Building was and the Mental Health Building up there. Smaller soccer fields up there going latterly, and then larger soccer fields on the bottom so that we could have more play. So, as we're closing down our parks to be able to do the right maintenance on them, we're not rushing to open them up real quickly. We can go from that one to Davis Field, shift all the soccer players over there, then shift them back over here, and then all the fields will be open during the season. But during that oversea period, we'd be able to keep people in them and keep going. But you gotta have the proper fields, or they're not, not gonna want to go to them. Like Miles is a great place and a great park, but the fields aren't as the size and quality that you have on Davis Field. So, they don't want to leave Davis Field, so we trash Davis Field. So, we've really gotta make them comparable, smaller soccer fields for the kids and everything else. And I think if we put that memorial there, it takes away from it. Where on the east side, we can, I'm not big on taking down trees, but if we have to move a tree and put some other trees and open that area up to broaden it up, we could really broaden it up, put the flagpole up sixty feet, put the memorial around it, put the nine eleven piece there, and then have a gate going into the History Museum, so we can utilize that if we want to, as we have part of the stuff. And we have plenty of parking there. You know, taking that retention basin out, I don't know if that's a good sign to be able to do. So, I, and I do also think we need to kick this down to our art commission and give them some, some parts of it. We already gave them that one piece, but let them work on it, to be able to bring it back with the design and that. I mean, they're part of the commission. That's actually what they do. They really should be working with, with the artists and everyone else to bring this forward, because it's part of their deal.
I think you just brought up a good point. The commissions, the community services should give input. Arts Commission can give an input and get something to come back to us.
Well, perfect. I think if the consensus is Miles, we can then jot out a few ideas for their input and review, and then come back for a final decision.
Yeah. And, and there's, you know, some of those trees, like the roses there, I mean, they have roses there, but they're, they're, they're way past their prime. They've been poorly pruned and taken care of. And you, no, we never want to take anything out, but they really need to come out and put new ones in, so that if they really want to flourish. And the same with that tree, the one tree, I know exactly which tree. It's been butchered for years. It's a, it's a, it's a ugly tree, and I, I don't want to take out any other trees, but it's not what it's supposed to be, and it'll never be, because it got pruned wrong the first time. So, if we have to take that large tree out to open that area up, and then plant other strategic trees down like we did at some of our other parks, then we should do that, and take a long-term effect. But let's, let's kick it down to the art commission, the community service commission, and let them, you know, work, the two of them work together, public arts, because this is gonna be art when you actually go down to it, and, and the community service commission, because it's a parks, and let them work on it, bring us back a design, an idea.
Perfect. Yeah, perhaps we'll call a joint meeting with the, both of them together.
Yeah, both of them together to work on something. I mean, this is an important piece, not only for our veterans, but also to memorize the nine eleven and all that was lost for it, and all the people that sacrificed, and, and to highlight our public safety, our police and fire, and let them know that, you know, we appreciate all they do every day. And kind of gives them an opportunity to, to have a spot there too, when they have events, to be able to come to a place and utilize the park and that for their other stuff.
You, the center column of that park, Miles Park, with the roses that the mayor mentioned, you'll get a big hit, because people still remember city staff cutting the trimmings, leaving them in buckets so families can take them home and plant roses. So, there's a connection there.
It needs a refresh, but there's plenty of space there.
So, we're done with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll come back. And we talked about a park master plan anyway, so that gives us the opportunity to, let's look at Miles Park as a whole and see, you know, how, how, how can we, you know, sort of rebrand it a little bit, maybe some new trees and new, new roses. And, I mean, just like the, the History Museum, you know, they have the, what is it, the Japanese garden?
Oh, yes.
You know, you could do a rose garden and dedicate it after someone, you know.
Yeah.
So, I, we have a lot of opportunity to do something, but I, I agree that, let's come back with some renderings and...
And we really need to knock down that old building back there and put the skate park in and just, piece by piece. I mean, that's just ugly, and it's dilapidated, and it's just an eyesore for not only the residents that live out there, but even us. We're just putting it inevitable away. We need to really knock it down. And since it's got all the area there, we can either cover it over, make it solid parking, or put this, dig it out, put the skate park there, put a fence around it, and use the rest for parking, repave the parking lot, move on.
Talking about the Burger Building?
Yeah, that's a go.
Perfect. We will bring back the input we received the commissions and get to a final...
Anything else, Mr. Montgomery?
Nope, we're set.
Can you do me one favor? Talk about our, I, I'm very impressed by our staff and the, and the Independence Day bash we got going off, we're doing it. Can you let people know what's going on?
Yes, and that, that is before our next meeting. So, please, come to the Polo Grounds, where all the festivals are held on July fourth, from six PM to ten PM. There'll be food, drink, fun, entertainment, games for kids, a lot... There'll be food, drink, fun, entertainment, games for kids, a lot of water to keep us cool and a very patriotic drone show that will take place on a scale that the valley's never seen. All out there at the Polo Grounds, it's all free except for the purchases you might make for food and drink and it's being called the Independence Bash.
And they can bring chairs and blankets and everything out. It's a family event when everybody to come out and let's enjoy Independence Day at Empire Polo Club.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. City Manager, with that, we'll move on to item number six, which is City Council Conflict of Interest Disclosure. Does anybody have anything they need to disclose? Mayor Potem?
Surprise, surprise. Let's see, I have a couple of conflicts here. Item eight point one one, having to do with the Terolago Performance Bonds. I live up in Four Seasons at Terolago, so it's conceivable that there could be a perceived conflict of interest there. Item eight point one nine, Landscape and Lighting Districts, actually number thirteen, is the downtown area, so I'll recuse myself from that. And just for the record, item eight point one five, with respect to the Miles and Daglet Nor Downtown Indio property, I'm, I, my conflict goes up to King Street. So anything beyond King Street, I'm free and clear to participate in and vote on.
So eight fifteen, no?
Eight eleven, yes, eight fifteen, no, eight point one nine, yes.
Okay, got it. Anyone else? Okay, with that, then we'll move on to, thank you, Mayor Potem. Then we'll move on to item number seven, which is the City Council's report on meetings attended per Government Code six and five, three, two, three, two point three D. Mr. Gutron?
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, June fifth, I had the opportunity to attend with other members of council, including yourself, Mayor, which was Principal Derek Lawson's final farewell of serving Indio High School, serving Desert San unified school district, all the boxes, being homegrown, his mother working for the city police department as a dispatcher. The grassroots is just incredible. It was a really well-respected and honored event for him. And, and thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Potem and Councilmember Wayman Furman and also Councilwoman Ortiz, that we all as a group represented Indio well. He was extremely grateful of the city, extremely grateful of the council, really had nothing negative to say, nothing. He was very proud of his city, very proud of his community and we wish him well. But I'm assuming the mayor and the rest of you have more comments on that. I was able to attend the Indio Post launch party and presentation. It's nice to have an interest in Indio of having our own community of information from a journalist and their team. So that'll be interesting as it, as it unfolds and how it benefits and the collaboration with the city staff and so forth. Thursday, June twelfth was also very important. I was able to attend a organized event at the American Legion Hall. The mayor was there as well, I'm sure he'll expand on it. But the American Legion Hall and Granados Post seven thirty-nine. It was interesting that the organizer, which is a retired captain, honorable retired captain, Tim Salas, was an army veteran, decided to do something special for the military women. And there must've been about thirty women that are members of the Legion, from the Legion Riders, which is the biker club and the auxiliary group and obviously the veterans themselves. But they made time to recognize women who have made the difference in the military. And it was a well-attended event. It came up at the eleventh hour. I was notified literally the night before and I called the mayor and said, do you know anything about this? But regardless of the fact, we picked up the pieces and took off. But it was honorable to see in the backstory and the history again, it gives credit for our, our discontinued discussion and having a memorial in Indio, but it was really nice. And it kinda just made you think, the contributions and the sacrifices and stuff. And there was a lady there that was a veteran that left the army honorably in nineteen sixty-three. And she looked like she was literally forty years old. Very proud of being a veteran and a resident of Indio. And so it was really nice. So my hat's off to the Legion and my hat's off to retired Captain Tim Salas from the Sheriff's Department, but a veteran. And the last thing that was really good, that I had the opportunity with the mayor is to tour our local Charter Communications, which is really the mother of Spectrum. Our Spectrum Communications Facility in Indio, what an outstanding group of people. We had the opportunity to tour the facility and everything that comes in and out of that facility out of Indio, the communications dealing with obviously what they do and obviously being a provider of our, of a lot of services to the city and throughout the valley. Most people will know them as Spectrum, but they have a lot of employees that live in the city and they have employees that have been there twenty, thirty years. And they were very organized, very proud of being in, in Indio. And the training that they do at that facility and certifying people that still climb poles. The whole region is, it has to recertify there every year. So it's not just the telephone people that used to house that facility. But it was very impressive, extremely organized and very proud of being in Indio. And with that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gutron. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. On June sixth, I joined the press conference in Cathedral City regarding recent immigration raids in, in that city. I joined TODEC, ICUC and a few other local nonprofits there. I felt that it was important to speak up against the tactics being used against our neighbors throughout California when masked officers, sometimes with no warrants and no identification, are taking away people of all ages into under-regulated detention camps. I spoke to the Cathedral City Mayor today and she has still not been able to get information on how many people were removed from her city, why they were removed or where they are today. It's been twelve days and she still can't get answers about who was taken from her city. Federal agents have also been racially profiling random residents and asking them for papers throughout Southern California. Ironically, they've even questioned Native Americans for their citizenship. It's shameful, it's unconstitutional and it's unnecessary use of our government time and our resources. There's been rumors ever since the raids in Cathedral City that other cities in the Coachella Valley are next and that is really messing with our kids and our families and our businesses as we saw today when a DEA operation was perceived as a large presence of ICE in our communities. We're still getting calls now about suspected raids in our neighborhoods. We'll continue to speak up and organize together and I hope we can stop these abuses of our people soon so that our communities can focus on taking care of their families and building up their careers and their businesses. I do wanna thank our chief and police staff for putting out communications, letting people know that they're always able to ask for help from our police, no matter their immigration status. And if you do have anyone that has questions about legal protections for immigrants or need legal help, please visit our partners at TODEC.org, that's T-O-D-E-C dot O-R-G. On a different note, last week I took a tour at Cal Earth in Hispania. I was able to see different types of buildings they have for display, including Adobe, Straw House and Super Adobe, which are bags filled with Adobe stacked to make different structures. They had one house for display that had four rooms and two garages and a AC system and utilities and they estimated that that type of house could cost about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build in current time. I'm excited for our item eight point fifteen today on our agenda, which will be requesting proposals for these types of buildings on one acre of city property here in downtown Indio. Earlier today, I participated as a moderator for a webinar with WELL, or Water Education for Latino Leaders. We had a panel of three professionals in the water industry talking about recent advancements in recycled water and how they see the future of recycled water shaping up in the state of California. I also attended the retirement for our Indio High School principal, Mr. Lawson. He was actually my elementary school principal, our Kennedy Elementary and Johnson Elementary. And then I had the opportunity to work under him during COVID as a substitute teacher at Indio High School. He was a great leader for all of us who grew up with him and we wanna thank him for his forty years of service as a public school employee. That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a couple of meetings. We did have our inaugural Coachella Valley Power Agency meeting in Palm Desert and that's our first meeting, JPA that we formed along with the County of Riverside and IID and the City of La Quinta. We were able to pass some bylaws. I was elected as chair for that committee, so I'll be chairing that committee from now on. And we're still working through a lot of the nuts and bolts of that, but the goal is to still provide reliable redundant power to our community and still continue to keep our rates low. There is discussion on how we're gonna do that, there's a lot of discussion. There's still discussion if other entities will join our JPA. Nonetheless, Indio is still ahead of the pack as far as energy is concerned, as we already have a JPA with IID. So our efforts are still moving forward. Nonetheless, this is more of a collaborative effort with the County of Riverside, the City of La Quinta so far. And so C-VAG will be handling administrative portion of this. And like I said, this was just the first meeting. It was a lot to tackle, but we were able to draw back some of those items and so we can have more discussion moving forward with other entities. And so I also had a Public Safety Committee meeting as well. Two of the notable items were, we had a good presentation by Cathedral City Police Department doing a crowd control with the recent bombing in Palm Springs and some of the big events that we have in our Coachella Valley. And being that we are a tourist destination, we wanna ensure that our first responders and our fire and folks are all, have a plan of action before these things happen. We've had some personnel from the City of Palm Springs there talk about their response to the bombing in Palm Springs and a lot of it was handled very professionally and fast due to a plan being in action already and always preparing for the unknown. And that's something that we had a very deep discussion on there at the Public Safety Committee meeting, that, you know, a lot of times we're going through budget and, and we're, we're dealing with different negotiations, you know, with our public safety. You know, it's always, you're gonna ask for more. You, you'd rather have more than not have enough, right? And so we wanna make sure that they're prepared, not only here in the City of Indio, but our whole Coachella Valley, because when we have our large events, whether it's in Palm Springs all the way down to Indio or Coachella, if there is an incident, we'll all provide neutral aid and respond. So a very good presentation by the City of Cathedral City. One of the other items is we entered a negotiated contract with Desert Recreation District to activate and maintain operations and maintenance of the CV Link. And so that's something I know we talked about here as construction still continues throughout the valley on CV Link. We, we wanna make sure that it's safe for folks to be on. We wanna make sure that it's activated, we want some activities. And so Desert Recreation will be taking the lead in that. And so that's one of the items that we did pass. Some of the activities I, activities I attended, I, it was mentioned already earlier, the Indio Post, yeah, I call it grand opening, right? Good, good event and it's good to have some more press come to our city that's just gonna focus on, you know, some of the things that we're doing. A lot of times you might hear about a installation, nine eleven installation. Well, we don't have time to talk about that background or you may not hear it, but the Indio Post might cover it and give you an in-depth discussion or, or report on that or an art piece here in our downtown area, right? We have the messengers here, what do they mean? Who's the artist? Who, who built them? Who put them up? You know, so Indio Post is gonna give us that vice where we could really tell our story. You know, a lot of times out there, you, you don't get to tell your story. And so Indio Post is gonna be a good partner, I believe, for us. I also attended the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce Annual Installation and Awards, another great event. Hats off to Brandon and, and the Chamber over there for having this annual event. We attend this every year. Congratulations to all the award recipients there at the Chamber. So that was a, a good event, it was at the Renaissance. And so it's good seeing everyone out, it's sort of like their end of the year installation. And last but not least, I was also, and attended the Teresa A. Mike Fashion Show. It's an event that I participate in every year, I think for the last ten, fifteen years I've been in an event. But the Teresa A. Mike Foundation, they give out a lot of scholarships to students and so they, they really do a good job with that. And so there's a lot of folks at that. That was held at the Awakaliante Casino this past weekend, so hats off to them. Congratulations to their Chair, Leanna Thomas, for working with a team to always have a nice fashion show fundraiser for our students. And that will conclude my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Mayor Potem?
Gosh, even in the middle of summer, there's so much going on around here, that's so great. Similar things, attended Derek Larson's retirement party. I mean, this man has left an absolute legacy across many, many generations. Godspeed to him and everything he wants to do and his retirement. Hopefully he'll spend some of that time working with us here at the City of Indio in, in some form or fashion. I know that he's very proud of his city, very excited about his city and all the, the changes and new things that are going on here. So, so I, hopefully we'll see, we'll see him become a little more actively involved here in the city now that he's retired. The Indio Post, that was just a great event there. Nice to see journalism in action, to have our own newspaper as a news rag, whatever you wanna call it, to focus on our city. There is so much, there's so much going on, there's so much in our, in our future and so much to discuss and write about and inform. So really looking forward to that continuing to roll out. I'd say I attended the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission. That's a couple of, a couple of notable things. We, we approved some dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly to, to, to purchase some flock cameras. We have all these lands that we purchased and unfortunately what happens is we get a lot of encampments, we get a lot of issues, we get a lot of trash and a lot of encampments there and, and they need to be taken care of and they need to be maintained. And the concern really is, you know, the reason we're, we're picking up these lands is conservation, it has a conservation focus and to be able to protect native species. Well, if you have an encampment on that piece of property, there's all kinds of environmental issues. They often dump things there, there's hazardous waste, there's all kinds of challenges. So we're gonna be putting up flock camera in this first twenty-five acre segment to be able to, once it's cleaned off, be able to deter others, encampments, homeless from, from hanging around there and dumping all their trash and, and really creating havoc with the environment. You know, we've had a lot of conversations, I think you're on the transfer station, JPA. There were some dollars, some tipping fees, so a hundred and thirty thousand dollars have been reinstated. There's several hundred thousand more that we hope for previous years will also be reinstated. So we should see that coming down the pike. Average cost for cleanup of conservation land, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. A lot of that currently is up in the, in the Greater Desert Hot Springs area, but it's something we all need to be aware of. We have beautiful lands, we have trails, we are working very hard to preserve them. Everything needs to be maintained at a very high level. We need to stay ahead of, of the cleanup issues. And last but not least, second Saturday, and so I just, that's probably one of my, I don't care who's performing, my favorite things to do, second Saturdays, my chance to relax, listen to some good music, enjoy the evening. That is just my one calm down thing, I was there, the, the, I think it was called the Brusquitos. It was, it was a fun evening. It's, I think what I appreciate most are seeing all the different families and all the people enjoying themselves. That quintessentially is what Indio is, small town America, which is what we are. And, and invite your friends and your relatives, please, second Saturday, concert, be there or be square. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. The only committee that actually had was active was the Coachella Valley Animal Commission. And to talk about a commission that's in flux, I got in, this is only my second meeting, but you know, people love their animals and there's no really good solution here in the Coachella Valley because a lot of the shelters that we had many years ago have all closed down and now we're working with a limited shelter amount with a lot more dogs and a lot more population and trying to come up with a solution. Steve Sanchez and Ken Nia from Palm Desert, Steve Sanchez from La Quinta, came up with doing a separate JPA that was shot down at this meeting. Basically, we can't really done another GPA, we already have a JPA right now, so there, you can't really do another one outside of it, the Riverside County Council told us that. So the costs are gonna go up, we're gonna discuss it at the next meeting of exactly where it's all gonna go based on it, but they're leaning towards a no-kill shelter is basically. And as we'll discuss our contract. And as we'll discuss our contract here a little bit later, it's really not the smaller animals, it's the bigger dogs and the ones that we're, they're having a lot more trouble with. So coming up with a solution, it's gonna get a lot worse before it gets a lot better. And people are passionate about their animals, just like, you know, everyone is. But this is really a group of individuals trying to come up with solutions. We got Kim Hardy, we got loving all animals, animal Samaritans. All working nonprofits working with us, trying to come up with solutions. And I think that overall, eventually, we're gonna have to funnel more money towards them because they can do more with less money. And do more actual animals than the county can, to be honest with you. So I think there's a lot to look at and we'll get some more ideas. Jonathan's working on it. He's done a great job of helping us try and do this contract, but we'll hear more about it. But there's a lot to this committee and I'll give you more updates as I'm going along because like I said, I'm new to this. The new executive director for Riverside County, she's only been there for a couple of months, so she's getting her feet wet also. So more to come. So with that, I think we all, a lot besides some of the other events I did. We went to the Hispanic American Chamber of Commerce. The first one that actually had a meeting down here was that Soul of Mexico. In Indio off of Fred Waring and Jefferson. Great little opportunity to talk to Hispanic business leaders. There's about sixty people there. We heard our Assemblyman Jeff Gonzalez speak. About what's going on up in Sacramento. So there was a really a good crowd there. And it's another opportunity to get our business community out and get in, interacting with each other and talking to elected leaders. There's quite a few people there from different agencies that could give support to the businesses. So it's great to see that. Actually pop up and you'll see more of them coming through out the whole Coachella Valley. So that's great to see. The Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce Business Awards. I was honored to install the new board for the Indio Chamber of Commerce. Julie Dill from Spectrum is actually our new chairperson. And our good friend Ernesto Rosales was honored with the Lifetime Achievement Award for his many years of service. Helping the Coachella Valley and the community as a whole, especially Chamber of Commerce, many years sitting on it. So my hats off to all the honorees from out the whole Coachella Valley, quite a few from here in the city of Indio, including Fantasy Springs. And then the American Legion Riders hosted a event, two of them actually, one was for Louis Bernal. For the wheelchair games. He's gonna go out there and try and win some gold medals for us and bring them back to the city of Indio. So he had a fundraiser there at the American Legion Hall. And then we actually had Veterans Day for women's. Which is an annual event yearly for our women veterans and they actually honored a lot of the ones from Indio. All of them, as Mr. Gudron said, were from sixty years to some of them that are still serving. Right here in the city of Indio, there was about six of them that from. Each branch of the service that started about five years ago and now are still going on. And some of them in the twenty-fourth year. And some of them that served over thirty-five years. So it's great to see and it's great to honor them. Our American Legion does a lot for our community and gives back to our, our community in so many ways. So it's great to be able to honor them. And that's why I think this nine eleven memorial along with our veterans park will be very fitting to the history of Indio and all our veterans. So it's great to see. And then the last thing is, Mr. City Manager, if we could look at many years now it's been since we've had some of our commissions. I'm not asking for, and this is for the council as a whole, not asking for them to have a joint session with them. But I'd really like to hear from the chairs of each one of them, basically what they're doing, how we can help them, what's going on with them. Kind of, you know, we get to see a little bit of it, but I think if we could have them come up. And the Airport Commission, he did an amazing job of Palm Springs Airport Commission. He did an amazing job of coming and telling us what's going on. Let's make sure that they understand it and kind of get an update from if we could, a couple here and there. Maybe over the next few months to be able to give it back to our community too. A lot of people don't see some of these commissions, but like our planning commission, there's a lot of things that they approve that never, never come back to us because it's in their purview. And so when you see these things pop up, they're doing a lot of good work and so does our staff with these commissions that are making a difference in our city. It's just not us. It's a lot of them helping us to be successful. So I think I'd like to get them to come up if we could. Is that all right with everybody?
Maybe we can set a schedule every six months or yearly or something.
Maybe get two at a time. I think we have six. So maybe two at a time, you know, give them five, ten minutes based on what they want to do. Maybe a slide presentation of what they're working on or have the chair come up and talk. And we can also have the lead of that organization, if it's Tim or whoever, Jim Curtis or whatever. If we need some reference from them, it'd be great too. So. All right. Well, thank you very much and thank all of you for continuing to support our community. You guys are out and about all the time. Represent the city of Indio in so many ways. So thank you for all you do. Move on to item number eight, which is the consent calendar. We have eight one through eight twenty. Mayor Protem has asked to, she's not gonna vote on eight eleven and eight nineteen, per her statements already. Does anybody else want to pull anything or have any questions?
I don't want to pull anything. I'll make a motion to pass that.
Mayor? Yes, if I may, there's one correction on item eight point two zero.
Okay.
It states July one, twenty twenty-six. It should be July one, twenty twenty-five to July, to June thirty, twenty twenty-eight.
Okay. You'll accept that as that correction?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Furman. We have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Ortiz. Please vote with the notes. Yep, we've already noted that you will not be voting on eight eleven and eight nineteen. Passes unanimously with the abstention of eight eleven, eight nineteen by Mayor Protem Holmes. We'll move on to item number nine now, which is the administrative items. We're gonna move to nine one. It's ordinance number eighteen twenty, adopting the fire hazard severity zones as recommended by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection pursuant to. Government Code Section five one one seven eight. Mr. White, Chief White, are you handling this for us, sir? Mike?
Let's try it again.
There you go.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council Staff. The item before you tonight is a change in the government code. It falls under our Community Risk Reduction, which is really under the Office of the Fire Marshal. So for tonight, to answer any questions and go over the ordinance and the staff report, Matthew Griffith. The Indio Fire Marshal is going to be giving the presentation.
Now, Chief, if I could, before he comes up, so is this a recommendation? A change of code that's changing the way we look at it or is it a recommendation that we need to took at? Because to me, it says, it says, you know, adopt the as recommended. So what happens if we don't recommend it?
Well, so this is, this is coming again out of the two Senate bills and then the California Government Code. So these are the recommendations. So if you, if you don't adopt it, we don't actually know. What, what the regulations from the state are gonna be. So while it says California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, we are responsible for the fire hazard severity maps in the state responsibility areas. They used basically our process to push this through. So while we develop the maps with CalFire and our state fire marshal.
Right.
It really is falling under our Office of the Fire Marshal and that Community Risk Reduction. And there's a lot of unknown questions regarding these, these maps.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Matt? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Matthew Griffith. I'm gonna go over a couple, a couple of things for you guys regarding the local responsibility area, fire hazard severity zone map. A little background is in nineteen ninety-two is when the first Senate bill passed. And they deemed that areas in the state of California that were very high fire severity zones. Several years later, in two thousand and twenty-one, it was broken up into three, moderate, high and very high fire zones. In Indio, we've been pretty fortunate. We haven't had any areas in our city that met any of these requirements. Just so you guys are aware, some of the things that dictate moderate, high or very high are the terrain and topography. Vegetation and fuel conditions, ember casting, fire history and frequency, the climate and weather patterns. There are some requirements for areas in high fire and very high fire that affect homeowners. There are no requirements or conditions in moderate. And thankfully for us in the city of Indio, we were deemed a little bit, the city of Indio was deemed moderate only. And that was in the north and a little bit of the western part of our city. So per the government code and, and the Senate bills. We are tasked with updating and adopting the map. However, none of the changes affect us or our homeowners as far as construction type, defensible space, things along those lines.
Insurance?
Insurance is, it's hard to speak on. You know, I like to read this a little bit, little, little blurb on the insurance stuff so everybody understands it. So CalFire's maps are intended to drive local planning decisions, not insurance decisions. Under Commissioners Laws and Regulations finalized in October of twenty-two, insurance companies must provide documents for wildfire safety. Safety actions such as community mitigation, home hardening, which CalFire maps do not assess. In addition, insurance companies are already using risk analysis tools and models that go beyond CalFire's proposed maps in determining what properties they will and will not insure. What that really means is, is insurance companies are not supposed to take this map and use it to increase rates. However, we cannot speak on what insurance companies do and don't do though.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or can I answer anything else for anybody?
Mr. Gudron?
My question is, when you're talking about the northwest, then are you talking where our city limits are near Sun City Palm Desert? In that area or what's the, what area are you referring to?
Yeah, so the map was attached, but I also have a copy here if you'd like me to bring it to you.
It's okay. I'll look it up. But I mean, in specifics, is that where it's at? Because I can see that.
All the highlighted yellow, sir. Those are just the areas, correct.
Okay.
But it hasn't brought us into any kind of higher aptitude that really has to worry about it.
That is correct, sir. As of this time, we are deemed a little, a little bit of moderate only, which doesn't have any effects on the homeowners or construction building at this time.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Ortiz?
Did any of those areas move up from not being categorized to being moderate now?
They could, yes. Based on some of the weather patterns or if there, if we get lots of fires up there, that, that's what the state fire marshal's office uses to determine these areas. It could increase. For example, our city has never had anything. And now that they changed these maps, now they bumped a little portion to moderate. So that is an example of a change.
Is there any certain factors? Did they bring up specific factors on why those areas are now moderate compared to before?
Nothing other than what they, what they, what they tell us that's based off of terrain, topography, vegetation, fire history and climate and weather patterns. That's, that's all the information that they gave us.
Chief, come on to Mike, please.
Specific to that question, this new model really took in thirty to fifty years worth of weather history. So that's really what's driving these changes. So we've had some, some pretty rare events, I'd say, in the Coachella Valley in the last couple of years. You know, we've had the Thousand Year Storm. We've seen some of these big wind events. Those, those anomalies are starting to trigger some of these changes in the map. So for example, there are other areas that saw like clocked wind speeds at a Ross Station at, you know, ninety miles an hour. Well, that, that data is now driving the metrics, which pushed them into a very high hazard severity zone. And so some of the tools that they're using, specific to the weather, is they're really looking at the ember cast. That's what we saw, you know, in the Palisades, the Tubbs Fire, the Car Fire. That ember cast that's getting into the homes is really what's driving the conflagrations and burning down communities. So that weather component is a, is a huge factor in these changes. Obviously, the train in the Coachella Valley hasn't changed very much, but the one thing that is changing across all the climates in California is, is our weather.
Thank you. So Ortiz, anything else?
No, that's it.
So Chief, so basically it's not anything that we can help prevent. In other words, it's not a fire break or something we can do. You're telling me it's weather based and mostly it's this information. It's not something like up in the hills as we've moved, like Talavera and then have moved towards the mountain. There's not like a break that we can do. So there's nothing really the city can do except, except the maps. Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, there, there are some things that the city can do. So as, you know, we talk about, we call it the WUI, so the Wildland Urban Interface. There are fuel breaks, there are opportunities, but a fuel break in itself would not have very much change on this map because again, it's looking at the ember cast. So if we're looking at thirty years of historical weather data and we're looking at the winds. You know, those winds are what's pushing those embers a mile to two miles out, which is why you're seeing that yellow creep down out of the mountains. Starting to touch the northern, northern portion of the city.
Yeah, I'm more worried about the homeowner's insurance rates because of them going up and giving any opportunity to the insurance company to charge more. And I understand they're under a lot of strain, LA, all the other fires. But at the same time, they just got out of the flood zone and saved the flood insurance. And now if they have to pay more for that, money's tight and the insurance companies seem to continue to. And I understand they need to make money, but they're continuing to raise the rates on some people that really can't afford it. And didn't bought that home knowing certain things, but not thinking about this. Fire would not be a major one of their concerns living in the middle of the desert. But, you know, flooding and other stuff was and we mitigated that. Now they're going back the other way. So I just, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something we could do to help mitigate the, any kind of opportunities that they might have that could affect them with some stuff that we're doing. Maybe we change the way we put in some of our landscaping up in that area or something. So, but you answered my question.
So there is an opportunity long term. So NFPA, there's a section within the insurance code and they call it a firewise community. And those are things that we would have to, and I'm working with the city's emergency manager, Scott Visiak. Because it's a, it's a safety plan element that gets included into the general plan. But we've got to time those with FEMA and a couple of other things. And so the fire marshal and myself are looking at, you know, those community wise, those community risk reduction programs. Because we're very receptive to what's happening in the insurance industry. By law, the insurance is not allowed to use these fire hazard severity maps to determine insurance rates. They use what's called a risk model or a catastrophe model. However, their models are eerily similar to these models that we have here. So, you know, across California, we've seen the insurance rates, as you mentioned, go up. And then several of the companies just stopped writing policies altogether in California, including the renewals. Which is forcing homeowners into the California Fair Plan, which is not very fair if, if you're up to speed on what that Fair Plan is, so.
Thank you, Chief. Well, that's something if we can do that and work into our next general plan or work into our, the way we're doing our, our planning of those developments up there. Because they haven't been done yet and yet at all costs, you know, but we'd have to weigh that against what it's gonna cost to actually do it compared to what the insurance is. If it's an extra fifty or a hundred dollars to their insurance a year, but it's ten or twenty or thirty thousand dollars to the home, then we gotta look at it both ways. So we appreciate it. Mr. Gudron?
In discussing this, and obviously you don't have a crystal ball, neither do we. Do you have the adequate fire apparatus to deal with what we have now? Or has we annexed areas that are open, there are more open spaces or vegetations that are identified? Do we have what we have? Obviously, CalFire can pull resources in, but do we have it in the city if we need it?
Yes, sir, we do. So as the city continues to expand, we're constantly looking at those opportunities to make sure that we can meet the demands for service. The primary driving factor in fire service and our strategic deployment of not only the fire engines, but the fire stations is response times. On the law enforcement side, you'll typically see so many officers per so many population. In the fire service, we don't have that. Our, our driving factor is really response time. And those response times are determined by the land use and the urban density. So when we start looking at, you know, a land use of a thousand residents per square mile, that dictates a four-minute response time. And, you know, we go to six and eight, just kind of depending on, you know, how many residents and whether it's a commercial area, those types of things. But as it sits today, yes, sir, we have the resources to provide fire protection to the city of Indio. And as the city grows and we're looking at those opportunities to annex. We are having those conversations on, is this the right time to look at, you know, another fire station? Or, you know, what does the future really look like?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Furman?
Good question, Mayor, for the chief. And this is kind of a different topic, but I've heard this and I'd like to expand on this since you're talking about response time. When you responded to an incident in the city, do speed bumps hinder your response time?
They do.
Can you just expand on that a little bit? Like, is it just, you have to slow down? Is it through apartment complex or is it through, through regular residential streets? A lot of times we get requests for speed bumps and some, and, and, you know, one of our, our officers just kind of educated us on speed bumps and response time. And, and that's something I think the community doesn't understand. And so to hear from the folks who are responding, I think is real important.
Yeah, so there's really two, two components of that. There's the operational side and the response times. And then there's the fire planning and then the fire marshal side. So specific to response times on the operations side of the house, which is, which is me. You've got to look at, we're taking a forty-two thousand pound fire engine or in the case of your ladder truck, seventy-three thousand pounds. And we're slowing that down to ten miles or less. And then we've got to re-accelerate for however many feet before we hit that next speed, either bump or they call them, sometimes call them calming devices, traffic calming. And so it puts a lot of wear and tear on the suspension. You're slowing down so that you can, you know, navigate whatever that, that traffic obstacle is. you can, you know, navigate whatever that, that traffic obstacle is, and then you've got to try to re-accelerate. So, you know, getting a seventy-three thousand pound truck, you know, back up to forty-five, fifty miles an hour, it takes a little bit of time. And so for every one of those that we encounter, it slows the response time down. And so generally speaking, while we understand the request for the safety aspect and controlling speeds, it does impact the operations quite a bit. And then when you get into apartment complexes, depending on the type of, you know, whether it's the actual bump, and some of them are very sharp, you got to imagine, right, we're driving a, you know, forty-two thousand pound fire engine, that front end is slamming up and down over each one of those speed bumps. So it, it takes a toll on the apparatus and the equipment, as well as the personnel inside.
All right. So would somebody like to make a motion? We have any more discussion?
No, I'll make a motion to introduce a first reading and read by title only in ordinance of the city council, Council of City of Indio, California Adopting a Fire Hazard Severity Zones as recommended by California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection pursuant to government, government code, section five-one-one-seven-eight.
First by council member Furman, second by council member Gutron. Please vote. Ashley Lance, five-zero. Do you need to read that in the record? Stop this, so we're good? Okay. We'll move on to item number nine-two now, which is review agreement for animal control field and shelter services with the county of Riverside. Mr. Nix, you're handling this for us, sir?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor, Mr. Council. Jonathan Nix, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to provide a broad overview. I know there's a very large packet, including your city council agenda, with the proposed agreement with Riverside County for animal care services. So just background, the city of Indio has been partnering with the county for many years, I believe, on, since twenty thirteen, on both field services and sheltering for animal services throughout the city. The latest agreement was enacted in twenty-twenty-one through twenty-four and extended through June of twenty-twenty-five. So that's why this is before you today, because that agreement is about to expire at the end of this month. So we've been meeting with the county just to review the current service levels. So on the shelter side, they provide care and housing for animals, adoption fostering, and community outreach. Field services side, they have animal care officers that patrol throughout the city. They interact with folks that report stray animals, or if there's bites or rabies quarantine, if there's calls for deceased animals that might need to be picked up, or if there's concerns regarding licensing. So the county had a proposal, this was brought up at a previous council meeting as well, to add thirty-eight new staff to the county animal care shelter system throughout the entire county. That's to enhance adoption foster teams, to also increase intake to placement program support, also increase marketing of the services that are provided by the county. That's an overall increase of about four-point-five million per year countywide. And that cost would be shared, is proposed to be shared by the sixteen cities and the county areas that participate in the county animal care services. So the Indio, City of Indio's proportional share of that increase would be three-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-one dollars. So that's an increase to what we're currently paying for shelter services. So to show that in a, a simple table, is currently for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we're paying just a dollar shy of four-hundred thousand dollars for shelter services. The county is trying to work with the cities to phase in that increase over time. So as you see what's proposed for just next fiscal year, for twenty-five, twenty-six, it's just a slight increase going up to four-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand. Then for twenty-twenty-six, goes up another proportional share up to six-hundred-thirty-four-thousand. And then by the third year of this new proposed contract, you'd have that, our previous amount, the three-ninety-nine, plus that total increase of three-hundred-fifty-one-thousand. That's on the shelter services cost.
This is proposed?
Proposed, yes, sir. Yeah. Okay. I will say proposed a few more times. For field services, this is again for the animal control officers currently in our contract. We have, we're charged for three full-time animal control officers. They're scheduled seven days per week, from seven-thirty a.m. to five-thirty p.m. The county staff clarified, we asked, they mentioned that there are two animal care officers allocated Monday through Friday. One covers west-sided city, one covers east-sided city, and then there is one officer that covers Saturdays and Sundays. If they're working beyond the hours of seven-thirty a.m. to five-thirty p.m., they bill the city at a time, one and a half hourly rate. So currently for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, for that seven days of service, we're paying eight-hundred-sixty thousand, some change. So what's proposed is just kind of almost a cola increase for those same services. So proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six, you can see that schedule goes up to eight-eighty-one, nine-forty-eight, then to nine-ninety-five. One option that is provided in their contract is to possibly reduce that service to just five days a week. So just to have it Monday through Friday, not have the weekend coverage. And so those are the rates there. So basically, you get eight-eighty-one, divide that by three officers, times it by two officers. So that's five-eighty-seven for next fiscal year, six-thirty-two for the following, and then six-sixty-three, nine-ninety-one for
So let me ask you, Jonathan, on, on the way this is set up now, is this including the three-hundred-and-seven-thousand?
No. Th- this is just for the field services. So you jumped ahead of me, Mayor, but this would be the total cost right here, adding the shelter plus the field services. And I just want a couple notes. You know, we've been, I'm meeting with the county on this situation and the services. So just an asterisk there, if, if we went to five days a week, if there happened to be a, a weekend response at a Saturday or Sunday, and someone called animal care services, that would be charged at an overtime rate, and we, they wouldn't guarantee the availability of the officer.
They don't pick it up on this Saturday and Sunday, so I don't know what that's going to change.
I'm providing information, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I, 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 I'm just...
Yes, sir. Yeah. Also, I just, we, we did ask the county for a report on what weekend responses are. They provided Mr. Montgomery and I a report showing that they, on average, from calendar year twenty-twenty-four and calendar year twenty-five to date, about fifty-six weekend responses per month. So those are about fifty-six responses on Saturdays and Sundays. That's what they reported to us. Okay. So, and then again, this would be the total cost if we continued with the shelter services and continued with field services for seven days a week. So currently, we're at a little over one-point-two million. Again, they would, uh, put in that, uh, cost of the shelter over time, increasing to one-point-three-four, one-point-five-eight. Then eventually, the, the third year would be that total cost of the increased staff at the shelter proportional share, which would be a little over one-point-seven million. Okay. So just some considerations for the council on this proposed agreement. You know, this is before you today because as mentioned, the current agreement, it does expire at the end of this month. So we do want to ensure there's continuity of animal care services, continue that partnership with the county. You know, we could continue to gather field services performance data from the county, ask for some more information, continue to review and assess the effectiveness of the coverage. You know, do we need seven days? Do we need five days? Do we need three animal care officers? And then reassess appropriate levels for maybe the following year. So there, we could look at those terms. You know, do we need a, a three-year term now? Do we look at maybe just a one-year term, and then continue to work with the county on, on those other options? And then also, again, for the councils to discuss and decide, give direction to our staff today, is any possible adjustments? So I'm available for questions, discussion. Also in attendance is Mary Martin, as mentioned, she's the, oh, there she is, the new director of animal care. Also Kimberly Youngberg, the assistant director is here. And also Kim Hardy's here from Coachella Animal Network. So all are available to speak on this topic. They're much more knowledgeable than I am.
We understand you're the messenger, so that's not, not a problem. But I, I think we'd, we'd love to hear. Mary, if you'd like to come up, that'd be great, or whoever you prefer to come up. But we, yeah, we do have quite a few questions, I think, as, as the council as a whole. Oh, come on up. You can introduce yourselves, if you would. Mind on the mic, too? Thank you, Jonathan.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm Mary Martin, the new director. And as you pointed out, only been here three months, so I need some support here. Kim Youngberg, our assistant director, who's been with the county for...
Going on nineteen years.
And James Huffman, who is our data analyst at this point, and many other things. Been with the, the county for...
Uh, will be nineteen years in, in January for me as well.
Thank you.
Should be able to answer all your questions with this team, I think, I hope.
So my, I'll, I'll start off, if you don't mind, because I, I sit on the animal control board, commission. But, you know, I've been, I've been in the city for forty years, and I travel through it quite a bit. I mean, I'm not sitting at home or doing other stuff. It's very difficult for me to believe that we have three officers here on a continual basis. Absolutely. This city's not that big, not to see that vehicle that goes through, go back and forth. And I've asked multiple times to have, uh, you don't want to give me the GPS, the trucks, all our vehicles are GPS. That's, that's understandable. And I want to sign letters saying that we have hundred-and-twenty hours of service in the city of Indio. You go out, mutual aid, completely understand that. But I don't want to pay for Coachella. I don't want to pay for La Quinta. I don't want to pay for the county. We have a bunch of county areas and thing, and mutual aid's one thing. But when we're paying for three officers, we expect three officers. And I can't tell you how many times I've called police department, because there's a dead dog in the street, where I've had to go actually get it, put it in a bag, and take it to the police station, because nobody is there to pick it up. And if we have people here, three officers, and I understand there's two during Monday through Friday and one on the weekend, then it should never be a problem that a city council member, or a member of the public, or a staff member calls to have an animal picked up during that time. There shouldn't be anybody that shouldn't stop and do it unless there's something like a rabid dog or something going on, doing it, to go and do it. But it's, it's not, doesn't happen once, it happens all the time. So when I see the rates raising because you want to do more no-kill shelter move stuff, city's all for that. But I can't in good conscience pay for three officers when I really honestly don't believe that we're getting three officers. It's just, I, you, those trucks are so standard, it's like a police car. When you see them go, you know where the police are. So when you say to the residents, they all know where it is. That truck stands out, they're so big. It's not like it couldn't hide someone. There's absolutely no way that it's controlling eight hours back and forth through the city. So I, I have a hard time approving one-point-seven million dollars in five years, when I can't get you to prove that you actually are doing the work that you say you're doing.
I'm not sure if that's a question, or...
It's a statement and a question, because I asked, I asked for the information to say, can you give us the GPS and show us that you're in our city for that long a period of time? And they said, we don't want to do it because we don't want other cities to ask. Then give me a declaration, a statement saying that we are there. These officers, you don't have to give me their last name, are there. They were in your city, Monday through Friday, boom, 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 boom. Then I can really justify actually giving more money.
Well, I, I think it, it would be plausible to have, if we're doing that, a list of responsibilities and what ha, how many dogs, cats, birds, and ferrets did we, ferrets are illegal, sorry about that. Did we, did we pick up, or did we euthanize, or did we have to, you know, cite because they, they weren't licensed, or so on and so forth. So to, to add on to that, to have that list of, of what, what has been accomplished on a month-to-month basis would be terrific as well. But we don't see it, because I've made many of the same calls that, that the mayor has made, and, and on a Saturday, and flat out been told there's nobody working on Saturday. So help us.
Well, and I'm, I think those reports are absolutely, we can make those available to you. I also want you to know, just because of this, this concern, and I've, I've heard this already in my short time here, and I think there's some misunderstanding about how we respond to calls in general. And I, I may be wrong, but, but I, I think people, I don't know that we patrol per se. I, I think we respond to calls, and depending on the number of calls, you, you may or may not see, am I, talk to me. Talk to me, talk to me.
So our officers assigned to the city are typically inside the city, unless they're running an injured animal or an animal back to the shelter, at which point, you know, you do lose some time in that, in that travel time back and forth as they go. Officers start their day in Thousand Palms, they're out here in the city, they are responding to calls, typically from the, uh, dive I did into your guys' stats that, that we pulled to take a look at things, our officers in the city are pretty much running call-to-call through most of the first half of the day. And then they may have a little proactive time towards the, towards the afternoon. You guys are right on par with, where we are at with our calls per officer that we do in the unincorporated area of the county, which is somewhere between seven to eight hundred calls per officer that they're responding to each, uh, each year, which gives us the time to be a little proactive. But they are spending most of their day going from one call to the next. And Saturdays and Sundays, they're, they're just trying to, they're trying to get through the higher priority calls that are coming in, because with just one person in the city, they're, they're not able to get to, like a barking dog complaint typically on a Saturday or Sunday.
So, so, help me with this. So how many officers do you have in La Quinta? I mean, I can look it up. But how many officers do you have in La Quinta?
One.
So the size of La Quinta's three-quarters the size of us, when you, you look into it. So they have somebody there, like a couple hours a day, or doing one call? How does a city of forty-five thousand people only deal with one person if it's not mutual aid coming from other areas? Because you're telling me three people can't do it here because of the amount of calls that you're getting. How would, how would somebody else be able to do it? Yes, you can ask a question in a second.
If, if you'll indulge me just a little bit, I'm going to pull numbers off the, off of my head, because I don't have, I don't have...
I'm not going to hold you to it.
Yeah. City of La Quinta runs about eight-hundred-and-fifty, has about eight-hundred-and-fifty calls for service a year, which is equate to about what each one of your officers is doing.
Okay.
So are, the way we have been staffing our animal control officers and recommending that our contract cities staff our officers is based upon calls for service per officer, rather than population per officer, or response time per officer, like some, like other agencies do. We're looking at the actual call volume that we're getting in. Even though the city of La Quinta might be three-quarters the size of you guys, they're also bringing in about, uh, if I'm doing the math correctly, uh, a, not quite a third, a little more than a third of the number of calls for service each annually that you guys are generating?
Okay. Okay. I'm here, Mr. Furman, then to Mr. Gutron. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys, for coming. You know, I, I think this is good dialogue, so we have an understanding what your daily duties are and what the services you're providing for us. And I think that's, well, one of the questions is, is we have three designated officers, correct, for Indio, right? And I think, you know, with, I can't speak for the mayor, but I, I'm kind of on the same track as, we just want to ensure that those three officers are available in Indio. If La Quinta's next door, and their officer is busy on another call, or one of our officers getting pulled out of Indio to go handle a call in La Quinta, I think that's the, the, the concern, because for a, a contract of this magnitude, are, are the other cities paying their fair share as well? And I think that's what the concern is, that we have three designated officers for this period of time in our city. That's where...
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, the, the answer to that question would be, on a regular basis, no. We would not be pulling another one contract city officer out to go assist in another contract area. The one exception to that would be if we have a priority-one call. A priority-one call for us is a threat to human life or safety. Whoever is physically closest to that call is responding regardless of where they're assigned to. Once we have an officer there, or maybe PD is there, or fire is there, and we can assure that no one's life or safety is in jeopardy, then we're going to continue on with the contract officers that are assigned to that area. So if La Quinta had a priority-one call, whether that's the officer working thermal is closest, because it's on the south end of the city by PJ West, or it's the Palm Desert officer that's closest, or it's the Indio officer that's closest, closest officer is responding to that priority-one call. Other than that, no, we do not pull our city contract officers out of their assigned areas.
Mr. Gutron?
So I was around when we ended up starting the contract, and preliminary, it was part of those negotiations. Two years into it, we lost track of it, because it was being handled by city hall and your administration. Out of the three of you, and I know with all respects of you, ma'am, in your career, how much time have you spent in the Coachella Valley? And did you start as a supervisor here, as an animal control officer? What do you know about our city?
I started with the department in oh-seven, very early in oh-seven. I spent the first three years as, as an officer here in the Coachella Valley, working over Thousand Palm Shelter. I was assigned primarily to the city of Palm Desert, but also covered the unincorporated areas around the city of Indio. At that point, we did not have the contract for the city of Indio. You guys were still running your own animal control agency through PD. I was then promoted to a sergeant, and I worked out of our banding facility for a few years. And then unfortunately, when we came around to the Great Recession and layoffs, and our department got hit very, very hard, I was fortunate. I had enough seniority to bump back to being an officer. A lot of our, a lot of our staff didn't, and they lost their jobs. I'm not complaining, I was, I was fortunate. I went back to being an officer. I got reassigned for a year to Blythe, and then I spent the next five years out here in the Coachella Valley, working, uh, I worked... Uh, I worked Desert Hot Springs. I worked the Northern Unincorporated County. I worked Cathedral City. I did some short times here in the city of Indio, a couple of weeks here or there to cover while other people were on vacation when I was a county officer. Um, but as an animal control officer out here in the valley. When you're on call at night, when you're the standby officer, you cover the entire valley. So I have responded many, many times after hours here to the city of Indio since we've taken over the contract. Then after that, uh, about seven years ago, I got promoted to a sergeant. I moved, transferred out to our Riverside Shelter. And then I was promoted to a field lieutenant. Out there and now I'm currently serving as our admin lieutenant as well as assisting with data processing and analyst.
Yeah, and our, our field lieutenant who actually serves out of the Coachella Valley Animal Campus could not be here tonight because of another engagement, which is why James is here. Uh, but we also have somebody that specifically serves just the Coachella Valley as a field lieutenant. Who's also actually even a resident out here. So of course. Knows a lot about it. Um, I'm a little more general with the department. I started in two thousand and seven in, at that. Time, we actually had a humane education department. And my role was as a humane educator. And I did, um, animal services, education department wide, so all over the county of Riverside. So I did a lot of work out here in the Coachella Valley at different schools and with the animal campus. Including even doing community assessment surveys out in the Mecca area and. Trying to highlight areas of our county that needed our services. Um, from that point, I actually worked as a coordinator of our spay and neuter bus that did a lot of work out here in a lot of different areas. And, um, from then I became a program chief over, uh, shelter operations and life-saving programs. And, uh, worked as a grant, our department's grant writer and development person. And I've probably been in my role as assistant director now for about two and a half years.
And the reason I'm asking this. Is we're the largest city in the Coachella Valley. We're a hundred thousand people plus. So there's a lot of people that have a lot of animals in our city. But I think one of the many problems that I conveyed this to our assistant city manager and the manager. You're, you're a vendor at the end of the day with all due respects, you're a vendor. Our fire service is also contracted, but they're invested here because they have a place here. You unfortunately don't because of your logistics. And you serve seven contracts, seven cities out of the nine cities in the valley. And then you have the responsibility in the unincorporated areas of the county. Which I get it. So if I'm looking at this. On this east end of the valley, so everything east of Washington, you have an animal control officer in La Quinta, three in Indio, what do you have in Coachella? And what do you have in the unincorporated areas east? So if you were to give me a number, what now, what that number would look like?
Uh, one in La Quinta, three in Indio, one in the city of Coachella, one working, what we would refer to as South County. Which is basically all of the unincorporated county, south of Indio, down to the Imperial County line. And then our central county officer covers Indio Hills, Sky Valley. Bermuda Dunes and the unincorporated areas kind of here towards the center that would border along the city.
So those dynamics are interesting, you know, but at any given time, you have five to six code enforcement, I mean, animal control officers available. Plus whatever your supervision. And then it kind of puts us together when we have these priority calls. And how much, I think part of the things that it's hurting us, you give us a bill, but we need more of a breakdown. And I think what you need to consider is to give us a status report. I think the mayor pro temp requested that. That would give us a really good clear idea. Our fire department or police department do that weekly? So we know how many animals were retrieved, how many were emergencies? How many times you had to leave the city because of another emergency? And your pickups. How many pickups you did because the perception is because of lack of communication. Contract went in twenty twelve. When's the last time you do quarterly meetings, sit down and actually get down to understanding? When you do get a new employee assigned, comes in from the west county, anywhere southwest or wherever. They need to spend a day or two with our staff to orientate themselves rather than waiting to call for service. Whether it's a ride along with our police department or going out with fire to know the hot zones, the, the challenge zones where the areas are. Your licensed compliance officers, they're great. When they first came in, they just were cleanup shoplifting right, but that didn't help us any. It actually got people into that compliance mold and it was really tough. But I think the hurt is, is after you're looking at. If I get it right, twelve years of service and now it's gotten to this point because we're not communicating. I don't think we have a problem paying the bill, but we have to be justifying why those tax dollars because guess what? The same taxpayers that pay us pay you. And, and you have to take that back. The, I had the opportunity and so did the mayor to convey that to their county supervisor. So you need to take this back constructively because it's, it's a big topic. And it's not going to go away any soon. But I think you're hurting yourselves and shooting yourselves in the foot by not providing that extra effort of communication. And you, and how you transition and how you do things, it might better the relationship. But at the end of the day, there's still a need. And right now you have seven cities you're serving at a facility that I believe was not designed for the, all this that you're doing. That's why I have this tremendous impact. You have seven cities that you're serving plus your own county representatives. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to add that, um, as we've done monthly billing, we have provided reports of the intakes of the animals and things like that. And going forward though, I want to say that we absolutely want to do better with our communication. Um, with Mary and I, one of our projects is we want to work on dashboards that would be publicly available. That you guys could look up that information anytime that you wanted. But we also do with our administrative team, want to start making regular meetings with all of the city contracts. So that we can bring all of this information to you guys and absolutely give you progress reports.
To me, you need to follow the same path that our council and everybody else is used to, a weekly report. They come in every Thursday and Friday and they give us that data. And I think that's not just going to help us, but it's going to help our management team. Because when we're asked questions from the public. We don't know that dog's been there for three days on the weekend. Was it because it was a bad location? Because the other challenge that the public has is your communication center. You go through so many people, there's no patience. We hear the complaints all the time and then that's presumed, that's it. But then we're finding out when the ACO comes out, totally different story. They're disconnected. So.
Anything else? Any, any questions you have for us or anything? I mean, we're really, it's a fact finding this is, because when you start talking this higher amount of money. You know, we've got to justify it and as everybody, as you know too, dollars are tight and we understand that being on the animal commission that, you know, we want to expand. We want to move it into a no kill shelter. But we also at the same time want to make sure that the needs of our residents are being addressed and that. We can honestly go back to them and say when they complained, yes, we do have these officers. They are picking up. They take these calls. They do these things. Uh, it, it helps us to be able to justify giving extra dollars. If not, then we have to look differently. Um, we gave up our shelter for a long time. You're the only game in town. If you were a, a different vendor. Let's just say you were like a cleaning service. We go out to RFP and we find out who it was did and we just do it. We're kind of stuck in this marriage because of the way it's set up because, you know, we're not adept to do it, nor do we want to get into the animal shelter business. But we want to make sure that we're getting our money's worth, but we also are conducive to making sure that it's, it's a valley wide. We understand it's regional. But as you can understand, our obligation is the residents of the city of Indio and we have a large contract that's going to go up. Quite a bit o- over the next few years. Just got, need to make sure we're getting what we're, we're, we're paying for. If not, we need to look and adjust. So, but we appreciate it and your comment, communication with Jonathan's well, well received. Yeah, he's a, he's our great ladies on for us. So I think we have a few people are gonna want to speak and if not, we can do this. Is there anybody in the queue, Sabdi, wants to speak? Any other questions for the staff?
I, I just want to say thank you, aside for this, thank you for your work. Um, you know, I. Mentally and physically, I had something I couldn't do. And I know it's a challenging task right now coming in, redoing this. So thank you for coming and like the mayor mentioned, it's about communication, I think moving forward. I think we, we're going to establish a good bond to, uh, make sure that, you know, that everybody knows. How, how to activate the services in the community as well. And so just thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to speak, Sabdi? Michael? You can state your name, maybe fill out a form when you're done for us. That'd be great. Anybody else wishing to speak, please fill out a form, bring it to the city clerk. You have three minutes.
Uh, my name is Michael Fibs Russell. I'm a resident of Cathedral City and I'm also a member of the Animal Campus Commission. Um, I have been asking for about sixteen, seventeen months for a change in the contract language and. Specifically as it related to, uh, treatment of animals. And I would like to extend to, uh, all of you, my sincere appreciation for not only changing it, but eliminating it completely. Um, and so, uh, I think that alone will help get us towards a, uh, no kill community. Um, there are some things in the contract. Um. None of them are earth shattering or, or crucial. Um, but I would like to, uh, bring up a few things, um, and they're more technical. Um, but, um. We've talked a lot about it at the commission, behavior and medical care. Um, there is no mention of behavior care in the, uh, current contract. There is one, uh, reference to enrichment. Um, and what does that mean to the community? So if someone says, well, where's our behaviors? Who's doing this? Who's doing that? Um, if we can clean that up and make that well defined, I think we, that would go a long ways. What is specifically our lost and found program? It's kind of outlined here as a online program, but spelling it out so everybody knows how it operates. Um. Excuse me. Um. There is a section in here that I think that everybody's going to get into trouble with. Um, it's on, uh, page twenty-four, uh, item fifteen. There is some, uh, issues here about the number of hours. Uh, for which an animal assessment will occur. Um, I think that it needs to be reviewed. I'm not the one getting in trouble over this, but I can tell you, I know a lot of people who will read this paragraph. Um, and I think that it needs to be uniform throughout. Uh, as how many hours before an animal is assessed when it comes into the facility. Um. Also, um, we need to talk about how to fund transfers. I. And I'm speaking on the, um, without actually reading the rules and regulations for Riverside County. But I do not believe the director of animal services is authorized. Uh, at her or his discretion to authorize a transfer if there's money involved. And that could become a key, um, opportunity for the community to reduce the shelter population. So if that could be added or discussed, um, if not today, but moving forward. Um, I think that would really help, um, our entire community. Also, if you could, in future commission meetings, um, be sure to, uh, get a clearer understanding of the healthy pet zone. And these other community support programs, I think that would go a long ways, uh, with the public, but I think we're on our way now. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else wishing to speak? Welcome, Ms. Hardy.
Hey, everyone. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Pro Temp, Mayor, City Council and staff. Um, I just want to say I've seen a huge change with the new, um. The county, the animal, Department of Animal Services. There is a lot of communication. They are making changes, but it's not going to happen overnight. And we as a community need to come together and help them make those changes. But, uh, you know, I can call them and they actually answer. The phone now and they've done major transportation, transporting animals to other parts of the country who needs animals. So they are changing, but it is going to take time. And I understand your dilemma, all of a sudden it's like, wow, we're hit with this many more, this many more dollars, but. The world's changing, God. Um, there's, you know, everything is going up. But we do love our animals. And, uh, so I think we just have to work together, be patient. I've seen a huge change. For, you know, it's not the old boys' club anymore with the, um, animal services. As it used to be with Rob Miller and all those guys. So we're able to talk to them. They're, they're want the public to help. Um, hopefully get a new volunteer program. The city of Indio. You know, I keep doing my spay neuter clinics and it is helping. We had one at Fantasy Springs. We did a hundred and seventy, excuse me, a hundred and eighty animals spayed and neutered. And, uh, that was in a two day period, which is huge. But we just keep doing that. We also have to have fosters. It's really important. Um. I'm almost thinking since you're having a drone fireworks, that maybe we could bring some animals there for adoptions, but I don't know.
We don't have fireworks, just drones.
Well, drones, fire show, firework show.
Fourth of July show.
Huh?
Independence Day.
Yeah. And then also I have another question. On the nine eleven statue, did you include the dog?
We'll think about that.
You did include it. PJ told me what the dog was included. One of those life-saving dogs? We'll see. Okay.
Thank you.
That's about it, but I'm just saying being patient, they are changing. They are trying to change. It's hard to change when you've been doing something for so many years and, and had no one to respond to. And now. You know, since all of the, uh. All in the news about the shelter and everything and, and Glenn and poor Jonathan went to the first meeting. It, it is brutal. But that's dying down and that last meeting was nice. It turned over. Compared to, you only meant to tube Glenn, yeah.
You mean it gets better?
Nobody was threatening you.
So.
All right, well, thanks.
People are very passionate about their animals. I, I, I agree with that, so.
Well, yeah, they're, they're, they're on the, they're on the verge of being crazy too.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, Jonathan, what do you need from us? And then also, um. You know, the, these points that Michael brought up, is there something that we can look into them about? Uh, I mean, this is standard language that in this, uh, contract, you made it sound like some of it's stuff that could be. Shored up. I know that we've got to work with the, the county. But is that something we can look into? Is it something we need to look into?
Yeah, that specific section that, uh, Michael brought up was, uh, regarding incoming animal examinations and assessments. It, it states that examinations have been pounded, animals shall be performed within twelve hours. Uh, except during limited service hours when the examination will be performed within, uh, twenty-four hours. So that, that's the specific section as written in here, so. Um, as far as the city council, the staff is seeking direction of their, you know, we have the proposed contract. I T, if you could bring the PowerPoint back up, that might be helpful. So as they're bringing that up, here we go. Um, specifically what we're, uh, seeking from the council, a lot of discussion regarding, uh, animal care officers. So, uh, there is a, a proposed increase to the shelter services as outlined. Uh, but then also do we want to continue with the seven days a week with three full-time animal care officers? Or, uh, you know, the county does have in this draft contract before you, um, an option to reduce down to, uh, two officers, five days a week? Or is there another version of this that the county wants to give us direction to work with the, I'm sorry, the council wants to give, uh, direction to staff to work with the county on?
So I'm not opposed to, what did we budget for? For this, this year's animal shelter and, uh, services?
So for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, um, looking at Ruby, we have that amount covered, that one point three four. Uh, one point three million. So that is covered for twenty-five, twenty-six. If the council wanted to, you could give us direction to. Uh, enter into the agreement and then continue to work with the county over the next year and, and look at options for year two and three.
I, I, I think it's, it's wise if we got it covered. I, I, I'm not against paying for what. You know, what we're going to get as long as we can get it. Also, I'd like to look into see if we have our own shelter officers. If something we can look to save money. And it's better service. I mean, so if there's, if they, you can work with them, I'm good. I also do want to get the, the actual statistics and, on people being in this, in the city. How many each one for each side? Is the east, are they east-west or south-north?
Uh, the, the county, uh, east-west.
So east-west, so does the east have more than, than the west side? Do we have more issues in the unincorporated areas? Is it back north of the freeway mostly? Gives us a better idea so we can kind of corral that area too. If we're having a lot of strays up by, let's say Shadow Hills. Then maybe we need to incorporate some more work up there, get some of the strays there, get them rounded up, find a way to get them adopted, work at other angles to be able to do stuff. So that gives us some more ammunition to do it. I would like to see it go for a year. Now, if we were to go longer. Can we drop it at any time, modify it anytime? Or if we get into the three year, do we have to keep it as is?
There is a clause within the proposed agreement that we have to give them. Um, I believe it's one hundred and twenty days notice if we're going to make a change. So basically at the kind of half year mark. Uh, we'd have to notify them for the following fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven if we want to make a, a change to services.
I think the other thing is we, we have assurances on the data, so. As you're giving those reports, if you can compare the month of June and twenty-five was this, and this is where we're at in the month of twenty-six. Is then it tells us that we need to add another, another. Animal control officer, what other services we need to add. Because right now we're just, we just know that they're there. We need that data to justify what we're doing. The other thing is. We have a difficult time maintaining our, on how we're doing in our contracts. Whatever we approve right now, we need an update in six months. We need another presentation where we're at and how we're doing. We don't want to wait until the end of the contract. We, we can't do that to our residents. We want to know how they're doing. We want to know how they're doing. So that's my opinion.
Understood, council member. And if the council does give us that direction, we'd probably come back more like in the November timeframe, so we're not right at that six-month, get some more data. And just also to clarify, the county has been working with us. There is a report within the packet that shows kind of fiscal year-to-date, July 2024 through May of 2025, numbers of responses by category. It's about 1,522 in the city of Indio, so that is included in your packet. And we have, they have been providing some more detailed information. That's why I had the information about the weekend responses, for example.
Yeah, and if you can look at the, like, the transfers and that, if there's something that goes through, I don't know if the supervisor or how it works, I mean, that's something I'll leave up to you. But I mean, if it looks like we need to do more spay and neutering through our nonprofit partners, and that's maybe something we need to do. If we can help us bring down our numbers so that they're, you know, the shelter's lessened with Indio dogs, cats, and, you know, animals coming in, maybe we can lower our cost down or look at other options to bring, maybe bring our own animal officers in or, you know, not to patrol, but maybe in the shelter, you know, to look at other ways to be able to make sure that we're meeting the criteria that we want and also, at the same time, being good partners with the other. There are seven other, you know, agencies, when you add the county in, that they got to work with, too, and we are partnered together. So how we can make sure that, you know, we're still being part of the team, but at the same time, addressing our needs. Because I'm afraid this is going to be kind of like fire, where it's going to get out of control, where we're going to have to make some other decisions that we don't want to make. So let's nip it in the bud now to make sure that we're getting what we think we're getting and making sure that it's quality to the best of our abilities. And that way, when we do have to eat that number or make that number work, we're, we know that, you know, it's a good number to be working with. Because, you know, when people see that thing going up, you know, 1.7, you're talking 500,000, that's a big jump for animal services. That's just a big jump.
Understood, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Other than, I think we should make a, I think we should make a motion. I just don't have a computer, so.
Anything you need from us other than make a motion?
So just to clarify, the motion is to approve the agreement as proposed?
I guess I'm thinking one year. I'm thinking one year. Let's take it one year at a time. That's what I'd like to do.
One year with a six-month update or five and a half months. Give us an update report.
And then if we feel that there needs to be some changes, we can change it, and then we can decide where we're going to go from there. We'll leave it in your hands to be able to work with, with the county to make sure. And if you bring it to us and we feel good at six months, then we need to extend it for another, you know, one-year time, then we'll do that as we go along. We'll just make it as we go through. I do want the option to change if we do, decide to do services up and down based on what we think we're getting, based on the reports they're going to give us. It's going to be communication from you and from them that's going to make the difference to us, so.
The difference we're going to make is that we hear more positive comments like Ms. Kim Hardy just told us.
Yeah.
Because it's been a while we get a compliment.
Okay.
That you're doing better.
And on that note, I'd like to make a reservation.
Italian is open.
I was thinking the animal shelter. I hear the head.
Where do you want to go? Babes, we keep going.
I'd like to make a recommendation, please, to review the proposed agreement between the city of Indio and the county of Riverside for animal control, field and shelter services, to provide directions to staff on service levels and length of contract term. Three, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in a form approved by the city attorney with the service levels and length of contract term, which we talked about one year with six months intervals of updates as directed by the city council.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Please vote. Pass unanimously, 5-0. With that, we'll move on to item number 9-3, and I take it everybody's good, but let's keep rolling. Then we need to break. Okay. So 9-3 is adoption of the 2025-2030 city of Indio strategic plan. Mr. Nix, you're back up, sir.
Actually, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
You know, given some of the nuances of a strategic plan, which is a little different than some of the agenda items, I would like to make a statement that, you know, I can read into the record, please?
Absolutely.
One of the things about the strategic planning process, you know, we only get to go through this five, once every five years, but that's very, very exciting because we get to plan and plot our future, talk about our dreams, what the city should look like, how it should grow, et cetera. There is a part of the strategic planning process that includes a section called downtown destination. Everybody's watched me up here for the last 15 or 16 years, recuse myself on all things having to do with downtown, anything having to do with downtown because I have a financial interest. So there's some concerns and consternation. So what I decided I would do is retain my own attorney, my own FPPC attorney, to make sure that I was doing the right thing, making the correct decisions and representing my city in the proper manner. So for, to that end, I'm going to read a very, a couple of very short sentences here that talk about the fact that I do not have a conflict at all, any kind of financial interest specific to the downtown destination part of the strategic plan. And just a real quick definition, it's, you know, reasonably foreseeable that the government decision will have a financial effect on the public official's financial interest. That's, that's the basis. It's, it's a possibility. It has to be more than hypothetical or theoretical. I know, those are words, but that's what the FPPC really is looking at, is as a hypothetical or theoretical situation. In other words, there's not a project attached to this. If the downtown destination section includes things like, you know, encourage retail, incorporate art in the downtown, that is hypothetical. That is not an actual project. That is not something that has any monetary component attached to it, for which I would have a conflict at all. And so we have no way to measure hypothetical retail locations or its impact. As a result, the analysis, which is many, many pages, which I'm happy to show anyone, is such that I do not have a disqualifying conflict of interest in this phase of the strategic plan. I am able to sit through the conversations, I'm able to participate in the conversations, and I'm even able to participate in the vote. However, you know what? I like to be careful, like to be on the safe side, I like to be transparent, so I will not be voting. I do not need to leave the dais, but I will not be voting, Mayor. I will simply abstain, but I look forward to being part of the rest of the conversation. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Mr. Nix?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, Jonathan Nix, Assistant City Manager. I have a brief presentation. We had a very robust discussion on May 21 regarding the draft of the strategic plan. I'm very proud to present to you our final draft of strategic plan and kind of go over our agenda today. So again, review and discuss this final draft, make sure we captured everything that the council gave direction to us. And then also regarding Mayor Pro Tem's comments, you know, kind of a hybrid approval, if the council would like to consider, is adopting all of the components of the strategic plan, the mission statement, vision statement, core values, all the strategic focus areas except downtown destination. And if Mayor Pro Tem would like to, she could vote on all those areas, and then there could be a separate vote on downtown destination specifically. And if she chose to, she could recuse herself on that. So this is a recommendation, kind of a compromise based on what Mayor Pro Tem mentioned.
Well enough.
Okay, so I'll keep moving forward. So also, I'd like to acknowledge, the Barry Dunn team is available on Microsoft Teams, so they're on right now. We have Michelle Kennedy, Bailey Dickinson, Matty Powers, that have all presented to the city council. So they're all listening in, hopefully encouraging me, hopefully I get all this right. So they've showed this before, plan development. It's been a very collaborative effort between the city council, the Indio community, and our city staff, working together to develop this current plan. A lot of engagements, you've seen this kind of engagement before, employee surveys, community surveys, going out to community forums, online, stakeholder interviews, very collaborative to get all of this information into the plan. Had those interviews with the city council, leadership staff, social media outreach to hundreds of folks that viewed and responded. We email-blasted all the Indio Water Authority customers, email-blasted everyone on Center Stage Newsletter, you know, Business Connect, HOAs, all our committees, commissions were engaged, leadership academy participants, nonprofits, faith-based leaders, leadership at Desert Sands Unified School District, College of the Desert, Desert Recreation District, and Sunline Transit Agency. So a lot of collaboration, not only within the city organization, but within the community and our community partners. We reached around 800 folks who went to our specific strategic plan website. They engaged, provided over 400 contributions. As you heard from the Barry Dunn team, this is phenomenal effort and engagement for a city of our size, having those in-person forums, going to the senior center, teen center, individual interviews as mentioned, and those online opportunities as well. They've also showed this, the House of Strategic Plan, vision statement, mission statement, all built on those core values of the structural foundation of the House and the strategic focus areas that we all worked on together, and having goal statements for those and objectives. And so kind of looking at those same elements in a kind of a timeframe, you have your mission, that's what we're going to do, our vision, where we want to be, our values that help drive that vision, and then those strategic focus areas that we all worked on together. So the mission statement, as revised based on council direction last month, is we provide outstanding public services to enhance the quality of life for residents, visitors and businesses in our community. Vision statement, Indio, the vibrant heart of the desert, where we take center stage and experience abundant opportunities to live our best life. Core values, I'm not going to read all of this, but basically, it's the three Ps: polite, professional, progressive. That's all of our city staff, our city team, that's how we provide services throughout the community. And our strategic focus areas, again, we went over this in a lot of detail last month, but looking at public safety, community well-being, downtown destination, economic opportunity, organizational excellence, and public infrastructure. And the comments that this council provided at the last meeting have been incorporated in here into those edits. So here are the objectives for public safety. I'm going to pause for a minute, but again, we did incorporate the edits from the last city council meeting, having all those things in there. Just a few highlights, you know, looking at, you know, evaluating our fire services, you know, providing traffic calming measures, enhancing traffic safety, you know, providing opportunities for outreach to vulnerable populations, things like that. So just, I'll pause there for a second if there's any more comment or review from the city council. Community well-being objectives, again, that collaboration with our Desert Recreation District and other partners. I do want to mention on the last point, we expanded that based on the city council comments, expanding knowledge and awareness of community services, particularly for our underserved population to help ensure communications of other services offered by resources such as Riverside County, who has a workforce center in the city, College of the Desert, our neighbor right next door, DRD, Desert Sands Unified School District. So letting the folks know that there are services provided by the city, but also our city partners. Downtown destination objectives, continue to bolster the downtown. You know, a lot of these elements were also in our downtown specific plan. Activate center stage, which has been done, but continue to have great events there, incorporate downtown Indio so that there's an area visually vibrant and foster community identity. Economic opportunity objectives, you know, continue to implement economic development work plan, goals, attract retained businesses, streamline processes for business licensing, encourage availability of affordable and workforce housing. So, and again, all the comments from the council incorporated here. Public infrastructure, very important for us, and we have the CIP item in a few minutes, but, you know, enhancing the tree canopy, promoting the CB link, you know, following state and federal water guidelines, implementing plans for the Indio Transportation Center, pavement management program, electrical substation infrastructure, all covered in here. Organizational excellence, looking within our organization, making sure we're developing our employees, increasing training and development opportunities for all of our different levels, looking at employee well-being, create talent pipelines, maintaining fiscal sustainability and solutions within the city, all that on there. And then also, the council's already been flipping through it a little bit, so we have our draft stylized version of the strategic plan brochure that's in front of you. I didn't print that many copies. Actually, want to thank Kreta Campos, our marketing analyst. She worked with Barry Dunn on putting this together, did a very good job. We didn't print a lot of these yet because, if you guys had any edits, I don't want to print like 1,000 of these and have to, you know, reprint them. So we printed just a few for you to look at, but this is the stylized version of our vision, vision, core values, and strategic focus areas. Yeah, if I didn't dot an i or we didn't capitalize something, I wanted to make sure we got all that on there. And just another look at a few of those pages.
So when it says a brochure, we're going to put it in, not a book like this, a brochure itself, or actually this?
Well, we'll have something like this available. We'll also have a shorter version of this, kind of like a one-page front and back, that will have those strategic objectives and our focus areas, the three Ps, core values.
And digital to send out?
Absolutely. Digital version of this available for everyone.
So hopefully, we can send that out to the community, you know, 13,000 people. We can tell them this is what we're looking for, this is our objectives and ideas and thoughts, and let them know it upfront.
Absolutely, Mayor. A lot of people, as mentioned, provided a lot of inputs, who want to say, you know, hey, this is the final result of all that input and engagement.
Perfect.
So recommended actions, as mentioned before, review and discuss. If there's any more discussion on this from the council to give direction to us, and then if, so be it that the council can adopt all those components and then do a second motion on downtown destination.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council? Any questions? First off, thank you and the team from, you know, helping us out. Obviously, it was, you know, we had the contract laborers, you know, the contract group that actually came and helped us, but really, you guys setting up everything, getting the word out to people, making sure that we got people there. I thought, when I saw the amount of people, I thought that was low myself, but it's nice to hear that that's, that's actually a quality amount of people to actually get some good feedback from. So thank you to you and your team and everybody that went out there, because the one we did at Little Street Music Hall was very well, well-received by a lot of people. So comments, concerns?
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Great job in putting all this together and extracting the information from us and from the community that we needed to know in order to be able to plan for our city's future. I think just the way this was put together, I think the information provided and the detail is really an excellent roadmap for the city of Indio for the next five years and possibly beyond. So thank you. Kudos to staff and Barry Dunn for a job well done.
Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Okay, you want to do it, and then the first ones, and then let Elaine not vote on the last one?
Yes, unless the council member has more comments.
Mine was real short, is we just need to make sure either the website or something so the public can see the connection.
Absolutely.
I just, I looked through it to see, you know, where is it? How can I connect? And I was just telling the mayor that animal services somehow.
Be a couple edits.
Yeah. That's it.
All right. Well, for the record, it says on the staff report that the council member Holmes has a conflict, and that's not correct. Nonetheless, she is going to abstain for voting on the downtown destination part. So I'm going to make a motion to review and discuss the final draft of the city of Indio's 2025-2030 strategic plan and move on to number three, adopt and approve the city of Indio's mission statement, vision statement, core values, and strategic focus areas, including public safety, community well-being, economic opportunity, organizational excellence, and public infrastructure of the 2025-23 strategic plan.
Second? First by council member Furman, second by council member Ortiz, please vote. That portion passes 5-0 unanimously. So we'll move on to the next one?
No, I'll make a motion to review and discuss the final draft of the city of Indio strategic plan and adopt and approve the downtown destination strategic focus area of the 2025-23 strategic plan.
And I'll second that.
First by council member Furman, second by council member Ortiz, and let me record note that council member Holmes will not be voting. Passes unanimously, 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Nix. Appreciate that. Well done. And with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is the public hearing resolutions on 10-1, number 10499, approving the solid waste rate adjustment and the amount of, as provided, in exhibition A to the resolution and declaring that there are no majority protests exists. Jonathan Nix, you're handling this again, sir? Very busy today.
Yeah, me again. So again, a public hearing for solid waste rates, we go through this annual process. For this year, because of the amount of the adjustment, we actually did a full Prop 218 process for this. We notified all the residents and out the notification of what the waste rate increase would be. The reason why it was slightly higher is we had that multi-species habitat conservation plan fee implemented in there, but for all the residential properties, it only equates to $1.41 a month increase, so that's a $26.38 per month. I will say, having just worked for another agency, that's about 10 to 15% lower than some other cities in the western side of the county, is all I'm going to say. So our partners from Burtec have done a very good job of keeping the rates down for both the residential and for commercial. And so that's just a very brief overview of what the annual solid waste rates would be. Claire Vera from Burtec and Seratoi- Claire Vera from Burtec and Sarah Toyota, our environmental programs coordinator, is available for any technical questions that you may have.
Yeah, no, I think we're good, and we have a great relationship with Burtec, and also, Sarah, thank you for your hard work. Any questions to staff before we open the public hearing? All right, with that, then I'll open the public hearing. And anyone from the public wishing to speak? Anybody here on this item would like to speak? Anything? Nope? With that, we'll close the public hearing.
And just for the record, Mayor, we did receive seven written protests in the clerk's office.
And they're put in the record?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments, any concerns with this? I mean, it's an annual increase that goes up, when you and I know we're working towards the habitat species, we had to pay that off too, so. Anything? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. It's recommended that after the close of the public hearing, and after determining the majority of protests does not exist, the city council adopt Resolution 10499, approving the solid waste rate adjustment in amounts as provided in Exhibit A to the resolution, and formally declaring a majority protest does not exist.
Oh, second motion.
I take it no majority protest exists, Sabdi? Okay. Thank you. Please vote. All there?
Council member Vithram, what was your vote? Yes, thank you. So, 5-0.
It's 5-0. Yeah, please. Passed unanimously. We'll move on to our next item, which is public hearing number, item 10-2, is Resolution 10495 of the City Council of the City of Indio, approving the capital improvement project for fiscal year 2025-2026. Mr. Wassel, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's good to see you all. So, this is the annual adoption of a resolution, which is required by governmental code section 66002. Because we collect DIF, we are required indeed that the capital improvement program be adopted annually via a resolution. So, the capital improvement program is required to identify the projects that are either fully or partially funded by the development impact fees, the DIF, and the city's proposed fiscal year 25-26 has particular projects that are listed in the staff report. For brevity, very quickly, Avenue 44 is partially funded by DIF roads, Avenue 50 widening Jefferson to Jackson Street, Jefferson Street widening, Avenue 38 to 40, Avenue 52 Monroe Street to Madison, and the Civic Center's storm drain improvements, DIF storm drain, and finally, Jackson Street and Avenue 50 improvements. So, all the capital improvement program projects are included in your packet, and they were also presented to you previously. So, for the benefit of the public hearing, it is important to note that per the resolution, that if you find suitable to adopt tonight, it does say particularly that the city council hereby finds that it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that approval of the capital improvement program may have any significant effect on the environment. So, I just wanted to bring that. So, a public hearing was noticed, and it is our recommendation to adopt Resolution 10495 by the city council tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Wassel? Nope? With that, then we'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the queue to speak wants to speak on our capital improvement projects? Nobody, Sabdi? That will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council? And thank you, Tim, for all your hard work and dedication. Anybody want to make a motion and comment?
Sure. Well, first, I just want to thank Tim Wassel and the staff for the great improvements that we're seeing in the city. And I have a little review here. We got 100 million in projects, 2.3 million of those in bridges, 10 million in street improvements, 19 million in pavement rehabilitation, 29 million in interchanges for Monroe and Jackson, 2 million in sidewalks, 9 and 1/2 million to storm drains in our downtown, 4.5 million to traffic signals, 6 million into parks, and 14 million into our buildings. So, I just want to say that out loud, so that our community knows the investments that are going on with our city, and how busy your staff is in providing those improvements for our community out here. And with that, I'd like to make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 10495 of the City Council of the City of Indio, approving the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2025-2026.
I'll second that.
First by council member Ortiz, second by Mayor Protem Holmes. Very well said, Mr. Ortiz. And it passes unanimously 5-0. With that, we'll move on to item 10-3 now, which is the joint resolution number 10500 of the City Council of the City of Indio and the Indio Water Authority, approving the Indio Water Authority Capital Improvement Program Development Impact Fee Program and supplemental water fee programs for fiscal year 25-26. Mr. Trejo, welcome.
Thank you. Ray Trejo, General Manager of Indio Water Authority. And today, similar to Public Works, we have an obligation to approve a resolution for projects that were presented to you as part of our budget approval process in the prior months. Resolution 10500 has actually three different capital improvements, one funded by our ratepayer dollars, the second one is funded by our developer impact fee dollars, and the third one's funded by supplemental water supply fee dollars that are collected from development. All three are combined into this resolution, and by approving the resolution, there's a total of 14 million for this coming fiscal year in capital projects for our residents, 10 million of which is funded by ratepayer money. It includes part of that Chromium 6 design. It includes the Avenue 50 pipeline that would help, I'm sorry, that's a DIF project. It includes a rehabilitation of a groundwater well to expand its useful life for another 10 years. It also includes valve replacement, meter replacement, and hydrant replacement to continue to protect our residents' infrastructure. The developer impact fee portion is 3.8 million, which is the construction of a developer impact pipeline along 50th Avenue between Madison and Jefferson that would help loop the southern part of our system, and would allow us to connect all of new development along that part of the corridor. We're doing so right ahead of the Public Works widening of that street, so we're getting all that as part of this resolution. And the last part is the supplemental water supply fee, which is funding part of the EVA program, which is to allocate $200,000 to continue to study the use of recycled water in the East Valley, to see if there's any opportunities. We understand it's an expensive effort, but nonetheless, we need to look to see if there's any grant funding, and continue to model and study and see if there's any beneficial use of recycled water in the East Valley. So, all of those appropriations are in this resolution, and we hope that today you can approve it.
Any questions to Mr. Trejo? Mr. Katron?
Nope, just like to make a motion.
No, I got to do the public hearing.
After that.
All right. With that, then I'll see anyone wishing to speak. We'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wishing to speak? Sabdi, we have anybody in the queue?
No one, Mayor.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I think I just want to thank Mr. Trejo and his staff for, you know, all this work that's going on to be able to prepare our city for the growth that we see happening in our community. We know that there's a lot going on, and different regulations coming in, and all sorts of challenges from the state level as well. So, I just want to thank you for all your hard work this year. Appreciate it.
Very much so, Ray. Great asset to our community.
Well, the quality and the flow is going great. Thank you. Resolution, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 10500 of the City of Indio and Indio Water Authority, approving Water Authority Capital Improvement Program Development Impact Fee Program and supplemental water supply fee programs for fiscal year 2025 and 2026.
I'll second. First by Mr. Katron, second by council member Ortiz. Please vote. Passed unanimously 5-0. Thank you very much, Ray, for all your hard work. Make sure you let your staff know how much we appreciate everything they do. And we'll move on to our last item, which is public comments. Anybody wishing to speak on an item that was not on the agenda would like to come up and speak? Do we have anybody in the queue, Sabdi?
I have no cards, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience wishing at this time? With that, then, we're going to adjourn our meeting at 7:20. And remember, our Independence Day bash is going to be on July 4 at the Empire Polo Club. Keep an eye out for it. It's going to be a fun day to bring your family out, enjoy a beautiful drone show. Everybody be safe, and have a great rest of your night. Good night.